Learning community where all students are valued, challenged and guided along a pathway to success. We always like to start off with our mission statement. Okay, that brings us to student achievement liaison report. Just told her.
I don't have anything.
Nothing? And then that brings us to Mr. Heather.
Mark, the legislature is on summer break, so there's no updates.
Quiet. And Jim is not here, so we don't have a public tech update. Do you have anything for public tech?
No.
And then that brings us to reports from any employee organizations.
Not tonight.
Nothing submitted? And then that brings us to community comments. Just before we start, we'll read the background on that. The Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest local school district residents' comments, suggestions and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the board conducts meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the board to complete necessary business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Most matters which fall under jurisdiction of the board may be addressed during the community comments section in the order of business. The board will not discuss negotiations, personnel in an open session. Any concerns or comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of the administration. A school district cannot discuss personal student information, whether or not discipline was imposed on a student, nor the reason for that decision, because disclosure would be a violation of state and federal law. And here are the following guidelines for public commentary at a board meeting. Individuals wishing to address the board must complete and submit a request to speak for them to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Individuals will preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address and group affiliation if that's applicable. Each person will be given three minutes to speak on an agenda item of any topic during the community comments. Public commentary is confined to that portion of the agenda. Individuals will be recognized to speak once on a given topic. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may individually address or question board members, district administration or members of the public in attendance. No response to the speaker will occur from board members, distinct district administration or members of the public in attendance during this time. Appropriate follow-up by administration may occur at a later time if that is warranted. No more than 15 minutes will be devoted to public participation. Repetitive statements may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer has the right to terminate the participation of any individual if the person violates the rules of good order. This evening, we've had two submissions, and the first one is Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, board. Chris McVeigh, 8198 Daleview. I have a question around vendor expenditures, and it is what documentation exists to establish that the $155,000 that was spent on middle school math coaching and the $1.5 billion that was spent on COVID impact coaching was effective? What documentation do you have that stuff was effective? The second subject is on cellphone use. I read a lot of statements about cellphone usage in social media this weekend. I recognize that cellphones are here to stay, but I'm unclear of their importance in the educational process, especially since each student does have a Chromebook or something similar. My review of the student handbooks, which I spent some time, revealed the regulations around cellphones' use are inconsistent or not in place. I think an audit of the current regulations and the effectiveness of the same is warranted based on my review of your student handbooks. The third subject I want to talk to you about is academic performance. When I was here last, I mentioned that the academic performance ranking of the district has slipped from about the bottom 25% to the bottom 15% of all districts in the state of Ohio. I reviewed the last six months of board agenda items and meeting minutes prior to this night's meeting to find examples of discussions and/or presentations that raised that reality and importantly found little to no discussion of what should be done to turn this around. That's disturbing to me. A lot of discussion around things that are going well, and I think that's important to talk about that. But for, you know, 95% of the students who are in the district and don't come up here and get rewarded, things aren't going that well. The data reflects the current strategies may or may not be improving our rankings and suggests a review of what we are doing is needed. We have a lot of things going on, and maybe too many. I mentioned, and because we need to have teachers who are focused on essentially basically what they need to focus on. And if you look at our website, there is just a lot of things going on, you know, and I have to question in my own mind if all of that is of equal importance based on how our ranking in the state of Ohio is slipping. So I think the board needs to spend time in some of their board meetings talking about that reality, you know, what is it that's working, what is it that's not working? And I didn't pick that up. I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up on the last six months of agendas and minutes that were written up. I did see, I did see some examples, and I'll stop. I did see some examples of teachers who are talking about successes that they've had, and that's good. But the data reflects that the strategies need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have one more submission. Mrs. Bradley.
Diane Bradley, 1834 Fallbrook Lane. I thank Rich for making the comments about the academics, because that was my big priority or concern. So someone stating that the current status is dropping, I'm glad that someone's at least vocalizing that, because as he says, and I actually concur with, I don't hear very much mention about what we're going to do to actually pull that forward. Not a part of my comments, just seconding him, but I will go on another comment he mentioned about the cellphones. As a parent that has a child or has children in the school district, the times that the children are living with in these days are a lot different than those who are on the administration had to deal with, including myself, as far as what the life is like inside of the school system. So to alter or try to do something different than the policy that's currently in place, I don't see much value in that. So I really didn't want to go too much in that, but just coming from a perspective of as a parent, I'm concerned if there's any alterations any further than the current cellphone policy that you have in place, because I'm speaking from a parent with a child in the school and not from a concerned citizen standpoint. Okay, my real point of coming up here is, it's come to my attention that a current sitting board member altered the surface of a school building without prior permission and was not following policies and procedures. And my grave concern is how can a board member of all people take the position that I'm going to make some adjustments for whatever reason without getting prior approval to do such things? We have policies and procedures in place for a reason, and if the current, the rest of the board approves this alteration of our building, I would like to ask why? This is not a rhetorical question. Is it because of a board member and they are allowed to not abide by policies and procedures? They can do things as they choose? Is it because they're an alumni? And if I'm an alumni, I don't have to follow policies and procedures? Is it because my intention was good? So if someone has a good intention, they can do as they so choose and not have to follow policies and procedures? So that's really my big thing. If the vote goes as a yes, please let us know, the community, what it is that your vote went yes for this person to make this alteration without following the policies and procedures, so that we can know that if I'm an alumni, I don't have to follow policies and procedures. If I'm a former board member, which I would fall in that category, I don't have to follow policies and procedures. Or if I have good intentions, I don't have to follow policies and procedures. That's my line.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that brings us to superintendent consent items.
So tonight, we have several items for consent, and I'm going to allow the departments that are putting those up to inform you of what they're putting on the agenda, and then I'll make the recommendation for the approval. So we'll start with human resources.
Yes, good evening. So this evening, we have three retirees, 13 reservations, 21 initial appointments, four change in status and various supplemental items. In addition to a resolution initiating a retiree hire for Deb Humbert, who is a special education teacher. We also have approval of handbooks and an updated mechanic job description.
Good evening. For general business, we have some vendor contracts. Those are for tuition, various services, professional development, facility use and band instrument repair.
And the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any conversation, discussion? That brings us to approval of fiscal consent items.
Good evening. I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the June 6 regular meeting, the June 27 regular meeting, the July 8 regular meeting and the July 18 regular meeting minutes as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussions, comments? That passes four to zero.
Thank you.
For some of the other items for approval, we have an out-of-state field trip for Corin High School marching band to compete out-of-state at Indianapolis, Indiana on November 10. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Next, we have a resolution with UC Health and the University of Cincinnati Physicians Company for sponsorship marketing of physician services. This is a resolution that we have been working on for over a year for a contract with UC Health for marketing that benefits both high schools. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. How long has that relationship been with UC Health?
This, I think, for the next five years. The next one is a donation that we had pulled from the consent items because it did involve a donation from Mr. Heather. We can continue to have that. We know there were questions earlier, so we can continue with the item if you would prefer. Or we could put this on the next agenda if you wanted to table it for more information.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, I guess make a motion to table it till the next board meeting.
Yeah.
A second?
I second.
And then vote in a room.
Do a verbal.
Yeah. Well, you. We'll let you skip this one. So go ahead and vote, but the vote will be on tabling and with mark, motioning, and that's it. Table the action.
Daryl, we'd like to address that. Mark, any comments about that?
Sure.
We just had a board member who was an appointed board member who refused to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, subsequently ran for election and were greatly defeated a few years ago, making issue out of me and another Vietnam veteran, combat veteran, who decided to do something nice for Colrain. It makes people not want to run and do this sort of stuff. It's like when I donated $5,000 for the new route. Did I have to get permission for that, for the storage shed? It's like when I raised $23,000 for the new message board at Colrain. Did I have to get permission for that? It makes people up here just infuriate us. It just defies logic. We went over there and painted. If you saw the before and after pictures, those kids go into that dump, thing hasn't been painted probably since I've been here 50 years ago. And so we go over there and spend a day doing something nice, and somebody comes up here and makes issue. How dare you? How dare you? You know, I am, you see if I ever do anything else for this district? I've lived here since 1956. My parents were one of the first people in this district. I go back so far that at Muffetites Elementary, I was surrounded by a farm with horses. And, and so it just, I'm very indignant by this, very indignant, and I'll be damned if I'll ever do anything again. I'm serious, Daryl. It just defies logic how somebody could come up here, especially somebody who, in my opinion, shouldn't be making, taking advantage of the good, good natured people in this district that appointed her to the school board. But with that, I'll move on.
So the vote will be on whether or not to table it? And if it's passed to table it, then we'll move on to the next item. If not, then we'll come back and we'll do an oral vote.
Okay. I make a motion to table it till the next meeting. A second.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Heather?
No.
Mr. Kussort?
Aye.
Mrs. Dobbie?
Aye.
So the next item is the approval of board policy updates. These were updates that were submitted at the last meeting for information for compliance officers and our animals on school premises policy. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the policy items as listed.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All right, that brings us to superintendent updates.
So a couple of updates for the community. Wednesday, from 9 to 12 at North Gate Mall, we will have our health fair, so we encourage our families to bring their kids, come out to the mall and enjoy some community organizations. Our fans are going to be there performing. We have haircuts, we have a lot going on, and we encourage our community to join us at the mall that day. Secondly, Tuesday night, tomorrow night, we have a hiring fair here at our district office. That hiring fair is from 4 to 7. You do not need an appointment. We currently have open positions for classroom assistants, assistants working with special needs students, and so we are encouraging anyone who is interested in working with the district, having the flexibility of the school schedule, being off on the breaks to really, and who's passionate about impacting the life of a child, to please come to our hiring fair tomorrow, talk to us about what we have available, interview with our teams. We'll continue to fill those open positions that we have, and we are encouraged by the traction that that has gotten on social media, and we're hoping that we get a lot of really good qualified candidates who are looking to join our team. And then I know there's been a lot of questions that I've gotten, and I'm assuming that the board has as well, around the safety grant that was on the media around schools that were awarded safety grants. Our district applied for one of the safety grants but was not awarded in the first round. They are going to be opening up a second round. We are applying for that round, and they have said that the ones who applied in the first round and were not granted will be given priority in the second round. So we're hopeful that in the second round, we'll be getting some of the grant money for safety and security improvements and enhancements. And looking right around the corner, school starts soon. So staff are gearing up, our administrators, our custodians, our teams have been working all summer, and we are excited to welcome back not just our staff, but our families and our kids. And so next week, on August 18th, it is day one, we are phasing in. So just want to reiterate our phase-in schedule so our families are aware that on August 18th, at the elementary, it'll be grades one, three and five, and at the middle school, it'll be sixth grade, and at the high school, it'll be ninth grade on the 18th of next Thursday. And that gives those grades an ability to really kind of get into the building, learn the routines, especially for those sixth and ninth graders who are at a transitional year. On Friday, the 19th, we'll have grades two, four, or K-2, four in the elementary. We'll have seventh and eighth graders at the middle school, and at the high school, they'll have all four grade levels, nine, 10, 11 and 12. Our preschool has a different phase-in model, so on Thursday and Friday, the 18th and 19th, they'll be doing parent conferences. And then on Monday, the 22nd, students with last names A through L will start, and on the 23rd, we'll have students with M through Z last names starting. So we're excited to welcome everyone back to another school year. We're excited for our phase-in that we've been doing for several years because it really gives students a real good chance to get a good first start to the year. So we are excited to welcome everyone back and looking forward to a great year.
Daryl, on the safety grant, do we have any idea the, what that money amount would be for here, or do they, you find out after you're accepted?
We apply for the max, and then we let them scale it back for us. And so typically, because it's a safety grant, they don't give you a lot of feedback on what they've done and why they've done it, so we'll continue to apply. And we've been in contact with other districts who have gotten it to make sure, and there's a list of things that you can apply for, so the list is pretty narrow.
Any other questions for Daryl?
On the, we met and talked about some of my questions about the levy. As we move forward, how, some of the information that you talked to me about and gave me information about buildings and that, how soon will that be out to the community? And so that, I'm sure a lot of people have the same questions that I do.
Yeah, there'll be more information coming out. We'll continue to update the community on the needs, and as people continue to question the information we put out, we'll be able to refine our message around what the needs are. So we'll continue, starting next week, being able to push out some things. We've been working on some recordings on some of the presentations, so people can go back and really dig into some of those presentations and get their questions answered. So that is forthcoming very quickly.
Will there be forums that parents and community members can attend at the schools or around the community?
Yeah, as those dates and times are firmed up, we'll make sure we communicate, so people can make sure they get the information.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, more is coming, but thank you.
Daryl, I'm sorry, did, do you update anything on transportation, how we do with transportation?
So we are excited about transportation. We have been working all summer. Our transportation department has been working with families to elect transportation if you qualify for it. So after that deadline, they were able to try to reach out to families and get firm numbers and then work on the new enrollees that are coming in that qualify. And so we actually have fewer routes next year than we had last year based on some of those efficiencies. And so our drivers come in on Wednesday of this week to pick their routes. And so after Wednesday, I'll be able to kind of give you a firm grasp on where we are with the routes, but we, we are looking good right now.
Good. All right. That brings us to board member comments. Chris?
Yeah, Mark. Mr. Viget said that we weren't addressing the deficient test scores in our district, and Rich, you're right. So that's why I've got the motion. Again, maybe I'm, maybe I got to get my head out of the 1970s, but in the 1970s, Northwest School District was on par with Oak Hills, Merrimont, Madeira, Indian Hill. We were the very top. And now to see numbers at the bottom 15%, it's like, let's do something. So with family members, I've got three family members that are teachers, and I've talked about different things with them. They're in different school systems, not here. And one of them was from my most liberal family member who tends to always give benefit to the students over the teachers when it comes to anything disciplinary, is the damaged cellphones do. He claims that in his class, 95% of the kids are texting back and forth, and then when they're done texting, they play video games. And also, the drama that we've all seen the videos of in the hallways, the fights and that, where eight kids just happened to have their cellphones to videotape it and put those on YouTube. I am, Ben, I watch them. There was a videotape at our graduation where some people didn't behave very well, made their rounds on social media. So I thought, let's do something about it. In my research, I found that barring cellphones, banning them from the classroom, letting them be there for emergencies, of course, teachers always have cellphones, actually raises test scores 12%. So Rich, if we went from 15% to the 27%, to me, that's more than just anecdotal. That's significant. So with that, I thought, let's, let's reduce the use of the cellphones. And I wanted to amend my motion to a trial basis of 45 days instead of permanently. But before I do that, I want to read an email that we all got from a math teacher at Colrain. I've got his permission to read this and use his name. "Good day. My name is Joshua Lockhart. I'm a high school math teacher at Colrain. Recently, it came to my attention that the school board was considering banning cellphone use within the classrooms to our district. This is a proposal that I strongly support, as do most of my colleagues. I've received several messages from fellow teachers expressing the positive impact this would make in our classrooms. In fact, my department is independently determined we would like to ban phones in our rooms whether or not we have the support of our district. As you are well aware, we face a variety of challenges in the classroom today. Students are constantly distracted by their phones, play music in their headphones, will also use cellphones to cheat on assignments. In fact, I am hard pressed to find one academic positive from students having cellphones during class time. A common argument I hear from parents is that students need access to their phones in case of an emergency. I personally find this argument disingenuous, as in my 11 years of teaching, I've never once seen a phone used in an emergency situation, but have seen them used to create emergency situations such as arranging fights, filming conflict instead of helping, and generally spreading drama. However, I've been told that Ross has created a common sense policy that works well in their building. By the way, Ross and Hamilton do have limited cellphone." bans. Each room has a pocket phone holder by the entrance. If students enter, they put their phones in the appropriate slot. If there were a true emergency phone that, in the, in the school or classroom, the phone would only be steps away. Trust that the board will make a decision that best fulfills the purpose of our district to further education of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration in this important matter." There's a lot of people who are against it, but we gotta do something, and for heaven's sakes, this doesn't cost anything. I mean, my goodness, we could bring in consultants and do this, and more instructional specialists. It's just my feeling. But, with that, I would like to make the motion to improve classroom learning and reduce disciplinary problems. I hereby move that the Northwest Local School District effective on a trial basis for the school year '22, '23, amend its, introduce the policy again on a trial basis for a period of 45 days. Number one, ban cell phones in all classrooms during the regular school day from time of arrival until time of dismissal. This applies to all grades at all Northwest schools. Two, students may utilize their phones during their lunch break, but must return them to their lockers before returning back to class. Three, enforcement of the ban on cell phones will be maintained by the classroom teachers and each school's administrators. Four, upon first offense, the student will have their phone taken from them and then returned at the end of the class. Five, upon second offense, a student will be barred from bringing a cellphone into the school building for the balance of the school year. Six, students who need, make or receive an emergency call may use the school's office phone. Now, I know that we didn't have shootings in the 70s, 80s, 90s, or even 10 years ago, but there were, there's 135,000 public schools in the United States, and there's been shootings in 14 of them. By my Corin High School math, that's one in 10,000. I had an email today from somebody who said that they were covering for one class, and a mother called just to chat with her student, child during the day, during the class. That's insane. And you wonder why our test grades are low. So with that, I'd like to make that motion. I dare somebody to have the courage to second this. It'll be the same old thing. If this doesn't pass, nothing will change. Nothing will change. We'll get consultants, we have meetings, we'll have breakout groups. Nothing will change. So with that, that's my motion, and I would like to make that, Amy, and hopefully somebody will have the courage to second it.
Well, I don't think it's so much about courage, Chris, as it is, this is the first time we've had any conversation about it.
Well, we've been emailing Mark back and forth for two weeks.
But that's not a collective conversation.
Well, it's the beginning of the school year. It's a good time to start it.
Then we should have started this conversation a long time ago.
Well, that's your opinion.
It is.
Yeah.
So, I can't sidestep administration and building leadership when we have a policy in place, and I'm only speaking for me, not the board, when we've not even been in front of leadership as to what our policy is currently, as far as how effective it is, if there needs to be an amendment to that. I think there's some stones we have to step on before we would come to an outright ban right out of the gate, personally. Now, do I, am I aligned with what you're saying about the distraction of cell phones? 100%. I agree 100% with you. But there's a process. We just can't knee-jerk and make an operational decision like this without having a collective conversation and some dialogue back and forth with people. That's, that's just not how you run a business.
Businesses don't have beginning of business day either, but that's, so you're prerogative, Mark. I respect that.
Sure.
You know, and, and, but, this is not rocket science here. It's just putting up a sign, no cell phones, enforcing it. This isn't rearranging our school system, or the, anything more than, you know, keep those things in your locker. That's a pretty simple thing.
I mean, like I said, I agree with you on the, on the position of there are distraction. It's the, it's the process and how we get there. I just feel like we've not, me personally, we've not gone through this process the appropriate way. And if it's a few weeks delayed with your motion, and we all talk about it, and collectively as a board, we feel it's the right thing, after we've all spoke, then we, we make a motion toward it. I have no issue with that. And if everybody is somewhat aligned, then, or aligned, the majority is aligned, then we make the motion to ban cell phones. I have no issue with that. I mean, I know that it, it's abused by staff as well as it is by the students. It is a distraction. I agree 100%. But we have to have some means to the process. We have to have some level of step logic on how we come to our decisions. We just can't walk in here and make a decision. I feel that's, that's a very haphazard.
Well, we invited staff, there's been more discussion on the Corin Township Facebook pages on anything that I have ever seen. Hundreds of responses. My count was likes were two to one against the dislikes. Some people are very adamant the other way. I respect that, but I'm trying to come up with something that is simple to change and hopefully simple to enforce, to get our schools back in that least median range on test scores. And, there's a former board member who, well, let me just say, I don't, maybe should bring him into this, but, let's just say that I'm open to any better ideas. And, we did send out to Daryl that he was invited to get feedback from administrators. Again, this isn't rocket science. I'll shorten it to 30 days if you want. It's not going to be hard to implement, and sometimes you gotta take the bull by the horn, and that's why we were elected, to make decisions, not to, you know, the, the new way of doing things of the touchy-feely, breakout groups, what do you think? This is, you know, Fairfield does it, if Ross does it, if Hamilton does it. This isn't radical, Mark. This is not a radical idea. This is a very, very, in this day and age, with the fighting and the stuff going on at all of our schools, this is very standard, rural approach.
Sure.
Chris, I do, I agree. I think we do need to make some changes to our cellphone policies with the high school. I have a middle schooler. He is not allowed to bring his phone to school per our handbook. I did not see anything in Pleasant Run's handbook. White Oak has a policy in their handbook about cell phones. For the high school, I do have a high schooler who takes it, you know, to school every day. I have spoken to Ross' families, teachers. It's not held to that strict of a policy in every classroom. There are some that do hold it. I would love to hear what our principals have to say, and the teachers, you know, whatever we say as a policy, it's only as good as it's enforced. So, I would love their input and buy-in on anything that, that I support as a board member. So, I appreciate you bringing it up, and I, I hope that we can, you know, not, everyone's not always going to agree, but I definitely would like the support and input from these, the teachers and the principals that are living it every day. So.
Fair enough.
I don't have anything to add.
Daryl, thoughts? I will say that all of us as administrators share your frustration with the misuse of cell phones. That is in our code of conduct that we don't permit misuse, the videoing, the sharing of videos, and students are disciplined for that. Currently, at our elementary and our middle schools, they don't allow cellphone use in class. Students are able to have them on their person, simply because a lot of our schools don't use lockers, or kids share lockers, and there's opportunity for theft, and so trying to be cognizant of the value of a cellphone. Our high schools have red, yellow, green zones, and I know both buildings are firming that up going into this school year, with zones being red is zero cellphone usage, to green where they can have it out and use it for, like, the, the music and things like that, and yellow for instructional purposes. So, our high schools are tightening that up in terms of what is red, what is yellow, what is green, with expectations. They'll be talking to their staffs this, this week, when they return, around those expectations. And so, because we share the frustration, they've put plans in place, and I can update you as we go through the year with how those plans are working, in terms of the usage, the number of students who are not doing it properly that are being disciplined for that. So I can continue to update you with that, but they do have plans to start the year that are different than how they ended the year.
Do we have anything about AirPods being worn throughout the building, so wearing in the classrooms?
No, so if it's a yellow zone or a green zone, they would be able to have that in.
So the hallway is typically green?
It depends, each, the high schools are going to be a little different.
I'm just saying, high school, sorry.
Yeah, and they're gonna, and they won't be identical, because each one is trying to address it from what they see as the, the issue. So, if it is a red zone, they would not be able to have those in their ear, because it's red, so you're not using that technology.
Can we petition feedback from our building leadership that's here?
Yeah, I actually talked to them to give you guys feedback before, but they are here tonight and are willing to speak if you would like to hear from them.
No.
I personally would.
But do any of the middle schools, do you see issues with cell phones? I mean, I know you're pretty strict about them, so.
Ali, put your phone away.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, no. Corin Middle School, we all have variations of our cellphone policy, but it is, as Mr. Yater said, it's strict. Your phone is not part of the class. You don't need your phone for class. At Corin Middle School right now, you receive a demerit for the first offense, second offense is an ultimate learning placement, then third and fourth offense is progressive with out of school suspensions. A comment was made about parents, you know, calling their student during the day. We've asked parents, and I've told them, if you have something that intimate and important that you need to call your son or daughter about, you don't want them taking that call in the classroom. Use the front office, give us a call, we'll get your student down there. But we also have students that use their cell phones for medical reasons, diabetes checkers, so they're able to scan, and it gives a reading back to their parent. So, you know, we also need to make sure that we teach our students how to use these, because they're not all about Instagram and Snapchat. It is a device for technology. So we want to make sure, a device that has great technology on it, we want to make sure that we teach them the right way to use it. And then also, just looking at some of my data, looking at some of my data, some of my situations where we've had instances with videos, things of that nature, a lot of it happens with drama that starts in the neighborhood, and Snapchats, and they bring the emotions of that drama that started in the neighborhood with Snapchat and the Instagram and all that other stuff that happened at home or on the weekend, they bring that feelings and emotions to school. So, you know, we don't see rampant with students just Snapchatting. Have students snuck and done it? Yes. I won't say it's a 0%, but the majority of our situations occur in those, the social media occur outside of school, and then the feelings and emotions are brought to school.
So, I, we have the same policy, apologies if we're unable to find it, we'll fix that for her.
I couldn't.
But we have the same policy at Pleasant Run. It's a progressive, we understand the distraction. We understand the, you know, the focus needs to be on instruction, and we want to limit those distractions. But I guess, I, we all, and I don't want to, I know we've calibrated enough, that we relish the opportunity to work with our, our students and our families. And so when we're using progressive discipline, when we're having those first conversations and those reminders, our kiddos are, they come to us when they're 11. I mean, I got an 11-year-old right now. My son could be in my building. And I think of how many times I have to tell Pace Flight things to clean his room appropriately, and this is the right way to do it. We go into this game, and our staffs understand right away that that's, that's part of the calling. We're going to have to send reminders. Are we going to have to eventually attach consequences to those reminders? Absolutely. But in a progressive manner, and we work alongside our parents to be sure that they can contact their kiddos, because, you know, sometimes I got 20 kids on campus well after dismissal waiting on that ride, you know? And we just want to make sure that we're working with, coaching, we're teaching the right way to use those devices, as Ali said. That's paramount. And to put a zero tolerance, rubber stamp of approval on things is, it isn't the way I would like to do business. I would very much like to work alongside, with, and progress through the learning opportunity on how to use these devices, as much as I would say this is what it's going to be hard and fast.
So I thought last year for, at Corin Middle, that it was you could only have it if you were doing an extracurricular or a medical need, or something of that nature. So now, anyone can have it?
No.
But you cannot bring it out, or?
Students, like, we have some students who, you know, their parents say, hey, when you get to school, because their parents leave before they leave, when you get to school, text me or call me. So, we always strongly recommend to students, your phone needs to be in your locker.
Okay.
But we don't always walk around trying to monitor people's pockets.
Sure.
So, when we see it, we address it.
So in the hallway, you might say, put that away?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And at White Oak, we don't have the luxury of having a locker for every student. So they share, we don't use lockers at all, but if they were issued, they have to share, which would be an issue with that. Our policy is similar. We implemented last year, no cell phones. For the time you walk in the building, so when you leave the building, you can use it for extracurriculars, for your rides, and so forth. And that was our first year of doing that, and it was a decision by the leadership team at White Oak Middle School to implement that. It would be a step backwards, in fact, Mr. Yater, to allow them at lunch, because that was the most troublesome period of time for the middle school. That is structured timing. We want them to learn to interact socially, and so that was when they were posting on texting and sneaking and doing those things. So that, that would be, our, our consequences are in line with Mr. Roy's here. First time, it's a warning. The second time, it's a referral, where the administrator keeps the device in the office. I don't want to put teachers in that position. They're teaching all day, so the administrator would take care of that. Third time is, the parent has to come and pick up the phone. And the fourth time is, you know, we go without and progressive out of school suspensions and so forth. We also have students that are on health plans that utilize a phone for that, to monitor their health and wellbeing. So, just to add on a little bit there.
The, I was aware that your policies were there, your student handbooks. The feedback I've gotten, obviously, Mr. Joshua Lockhart, he wouldn't have written this if they were enforced. I, I'm told from others, I've gotten a lot of feedback this past week, that there are policies that many teachers are afraid to enforce them, more so at the high school level, where, you know, when I was a seventh grader, I was probably 80 pounds. When I graduated, I was 180 pounds. So, you know, it's, I think, maybe at the high school level, more of an issue with enforcement, just because the kids are, some of them are adults. And so, I, I'm not so much worried about the middle school. The elementary school's certainly not an issue, but the, the high school is where this was mainly directed. But, just so nobody could say it was unfair, that's why I encompassed all, saying all schools, because sure as you're born, somebody's going to say, well, that's not fair, that you're picking on the high school kids and not the elementary or middle school kids. So I appreciate what you're saying.
I mean, one other thing to keep in mind is, you know, the mention of confiscating a student's phone. If a teacher loses that phone, who's financially responsible for that lost phone? And then also, if a student, or, sorry, if a teacher drops a phone, or if, you know, Mr. Watkins, I'm asking for his phone, and he decides to not give me the phone, now we're creating potentially a bigger situation. And so, obviously, we want to keep students in school. I agree, we need to make sure that we curb the technology, but it's a matter of having that diligence, picking our battles, keeping our students in class. That's one of the ways that we do raise those test scores, and not having them out of school for a cellphone infraction. I do think, again, we want to, all three of us have had conversations about, you know, better and stricter enforcement of that, of that policy, but, you know, we want to make sure that we keep our students in school. Anything can happen. You know, I could lose, I've, I've lost pens on my desk, and I thought, I could have swore it was there, and then I come back and it's gone. So we just want to make sure that we also aren't putting our teachers in a very, in a, going to pick them, you know, in certain situations as well, whether that's middle school or high school.
Do you mind if high school?
No, I'd love to hear from you.
I don't have much more to add, but I just did want to include, from the high school level, a lot of what those gentlemen said would, would be echoed. I think it's very important to remember that we're dealing with ninth graders and 12th graders, who, most of them are driving or staying for extracurriculars. So it's very important that they have some form of communication home, like they said as well. We also have car riders too, that wait until 6 o'clock at night for a ride. So I think it's important to keep that line of communication open. We have students who are able to get a locker if they would like, but storing it in their locker might not be the most convenient. Is it something that could be done? Absolutely. But I also think too, when I'm dealing with an 18-year-old senior, my job is to prepare them for what comes next. So I want to make sure that I am teaching them when it's appropriate to have their phone out, when they need to be putting their phone away. I will be the first to admit that during COVID, when we stayed in co-parks for multiple hours of the day, we got away from our cellphone policy, the red, yellow, and green. However, at the end of last school year, we had a, a good conversation amongst our admin team. However, at the end of last school year, we had a good conversation amongst our admin team about bringing this back, starting strong, supporting our teachers because every teacher likes to do business a little differently, and I want Nicole to be able to do what she wants in her classroom, even if it's different than Mark. But they understand, they're their expert in their classroom and they understand what their educational needs are. So, I, we plan as soon as our teachers to come back that this is gonna be a topic, this has been a conversation all summer, but this would be a topic, and we will support our teachers. It is in our code of conduct, if you're using a cellphone inappropriately, you will be disciplined. And we will support our teachers if they feel that a student is being disrespectful. So, I, that was something that we planned to do because I would agree that it is a distraction. It can be a distraction for me and as an adult, but I wanna make sure that we're using these opportunities, red, yellow, green, what the teacher and faculty see fit to teach students when it's appropriate and when it's not. So, I think to just take this away is going to, I was an assistant principal in the day of no cellphones and, like they said, it created far more issues when it was, I'm checking the time, or my mom called, and then it became a debate. And I'm not looking for that type of relationship with students. I want, like Brad said, I wanna work with kids and families and make sure that I'm setting them up for success. And unfortunately, I think cellphones are part of all of our worlds, that I need to be doing that in a manner that I'm teaching them when it is appropriate and when it's not, and then we work through issues when those arise. And I know that there have been many issues this past school year, unfortunately, where students did use cellphones inappropriately, and all students that were found to have been involved were disciplined. That is a strict policy, and we will make sure to continue with that regardless of what happens.
And I just have the lands from another state, I don't have the lands from this state, I can talk from Texas. So, it's a problem everywhere, it's just not in Ohio. What I can say is speaking from the safety point of view, losing 19 kids and being very close to Uvalde and losing 19 elementary kids, and you have three, you had three calls from an elementary student saying, please come in and help us, somebody is out outside of our door trying to kill us. We don't have, and I was talking to Mr. Yater about this, it's not a closed campus, it's a very open campus, which is different from me because Tyler Legacy and John Tyler, in Texas, we were gated in and we had guard checks. So, to have, to be open in that manner and to know that somebody is mental enough to walk in an elementary school and lay down 19 kids and two teachers, we can't say that we're exempt from that. So, we have to speak from the point of safety, and gone are the days that we can say it'll never happen because it can happen to us. We just had a kid come in our school and break windows and televisions and things of that nature. So, it can happen, and I want my kids to be able to, if we're not seeing something that's happening, happening in the back, I want our kids to have the initiative to keep themselves safe and pick up the phone and call 911 and say, hey, something is going on because a lot of times, by the time you respond, it's too late. And so, if we just, it's a problem, no doubt, not just in Ohio, everywhere. But just to ban it completely, I think it puts our, we become sitting ducks when we do that, and I'm uncomfortable.
Can you speak just quickly about what, is the hallway a red or a green? That's where I would see, you know, kids are just head down on the phone with a headphone in, which is a safety concern.
Yes, for us, hallways were green, classrooms could be either color, all offices, bathrooms, and the nurses' office is a red zone regardless. That's where a lot of private information happens.
So, we've been talking at Northwest, and what we're deciding to do is the only green zone we're gonna have is the cafeteria. I'm looking at it like a workspace, and you're, if you're working in high school, you wanna prepare them for the door and outside of high school. So, if you're on a job and you're getting paid, then you're not supposed to be at your desk on your phone, but your lunch is your time. So, they're up and coming young adults, and we want to give them the opportunity to be able to have that. And on top of that, we wanna use it as a nugget, that if they're not getting to class on time or not doing what they're supposed to do, we can also shut it down. So, the only green zone we'll have is the cafeteria.
Thank you.
So, a question.
Yes.
What, so Northwest is gonna be a little bit different than Colrain. So, I guess, Aaron, if one teacher allows it and another teacher doesn't allow it, doesn't that create some confusion with the student?
It does. When the policy first came out, every staff member was given red, yellow, and greens signs, they were uniform across all classrooms through conversation. If, if that is something that our staff is interested in, we are, or I'm willing to make those signs. But it is not something that, at this point, we have copied that for everyone. I want it to be something that, like I kinda said, that you make your, but I do want it to be something that students understand what it is so there's no confusion, that when I walk into my first bell, it could be one color, my next bell could be a different color. The other thing we will make very clear to students is that it could be a green zone for the first 10 minutes of class when I'm doing free riding, but then as I move into instruction, it couldn't look to a red zone. That's something, another, a point of conversation with our students so that they understand that it's, it's gonna be on them and like, it's on them to understand when is the time and what, what zone am I in so that the students need to realize that and that they're following those procedures.
I guess the trick to this is the, we have policies, and uphold in these policies, they're not suggestions, they're policies. And, you know, I've been on the board almost five years now and I, I get feedback all the time about, I don't get supported with this and this policy, or I disciplined a student and it got knocked down. And there's always, there's always a story behind everything, you know, why an administrator may re-label a discipline situation that occurred. But I, I think the most important thing is that we come out of the gate with a culture of, this is real deal. Like, this, there's going to be ramifications if you break the policy. And, and that's gotta be from this, top-down, from the staff down, from the administrators down. And, and I guess, just know from a board's perspective, we have your back on that. You know, I, I agree 100% with Chris, I want the best for our kids. Yanking something out like a cellphone, I don't think we would even completely understand the ramification with that. It, it could absolutely paralyze the beginning of the school year to where it would be a horrendous start. I don't know, I mean, this is kind of uncharted water for us. But I appreciate everybody's feedback, but this is the first we've had an opportunity to, to listen to the building leadership.
I wanna thank the administrators for being here tonight and for speaking, and just reinforce with the board that whether you're at the middle school where it's always red or you're at Corey High School where I just flipped it from green to red, if students are not following the expectation and they are sent to the office from the teacher for not following that, they will be dealt with from an administrative perspective, whether they're a middle schooler or a high schooler.
Then, could we, can we put on the agenda after a month or two, after school starts, to get feedback from the building leadership as to how these efforts are going?
Yep.
And at that point, Chris, if we need to reevaluate it and that's the only solution, then I think we reevaluate that, honestly.
Fair enough.
Yep, I'll put it on the agenda.
I just wanna reinforce what, you know, what Daryl just said, what I'm hearing from the high schools and from the middle schools, that our teachers are empowered to deal with this in the classroom and, you know, staff, and that they'll be, you know, supported and they're disciplined with the school administration and that building administration is supported by A O. And I think, you know, we as a board, you know, created the policies and we wanna support you in that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's not the current.
Yeah.
Wonderful conversation, wonderful conversation, I'm glad you had it. That's why I brought up in the beginning, I think if you penetrate and look at the stand, at the handbooks, standards aren't clear in all the handbooks, that's just part of it. What you also heard is all these people talked with a little different signal on each, how they're dealing with this. Not exactly consistent, okay? That's part of the problem.
Right.
That's part of the problem. And all, we have well intents to try to do it, I think until we all get to the same page, same written page, the same expectations, how do you deal with a person who's got a medical problem, all that kinda stuff, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard to administer.
Sure.
Okay, and teachers, teachers are gonna be, they'll be taken advantage of.
Sure.
And that's, this is one way to reduce the workload. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Ms. Toby?
Yep, I just wanted to thank all the parents and families who were at Corey High School over the weekend, getting stuff together for the new year. So, if you have anything going on like that at Northwest, please let me know, 'cause that was a fun time. Also, the community party kickoff this Wednesday at Colrain again. If we have Northwest things, please let us know, I'd be, love to share those and be at that, the Back to School Health and Safety Fair. And also wish all the staff and students a safe and memorable school year. And also, just to let Chris know, don't let someone stop you from doing positive things. Obviously, we have to follow policies and procedures, but you all obviously have a heart for the community and wanting to make things look good and, you know, be positive. So, you can't let someone put your light out for that, so.
Thanks, Nicole. It was more of the, when I sent Daryl the before and after pictures, I used the fable, the elves and the cobbler, where the elves just did something nice for the cobbler without telling him because he wasn't making it. And, you know, that's where, Nicole, I really appreciate you saying that, I can't tell you how much I do. But that's where, it's a public restroom, and that's ground central for our home football games at Colrain, right there, and that's where everybody congregates. And anybody who would argue that what it looks like now isn't 1,000% better than what it looked like two weeks ago, then, well, then I've got a problem. So, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
So, my calculations, I think we're with 10 days away from the first day of school. So, you know, students enjoy your final nine days before you return. And, you know, good luck in the new school year and for a safe and productive school year.
To piggyback on what Nicole said, I've known Chris for a while. He's got a pure heart, his heart is pure, but there's a process we have to follow because if somebody else wanted to go up and paint it purple, we'd have a problem with that.
There'd be a problem.
So, it's, it's about, to me, the theme tonight was process, we have to have a process. I, I know what your intention is, I, like I said, I've known.
Sink over, as it was.
Right, but Aaron, Aaron has to control her building, like, she has to have control over her building. Either way, I just say, like, we just need to make sure that if we're gonna do something, that we just let somebody know. I mean, even just give Daryl a heads up, Daryl will feed it to whoever needs to be fed, that.
I think I was more looking at it not to subvert any kind of process, but more of like, why don't they come in Monday morning and see this?
Oh, I have no doubt, that was your intention.
That was, that was the goal, just to, because we did it when nobody was there, we didn't see a single person the whole time. So, but, but I appreciate it, Chris.
Yep. Thank you, Rich, thank you Diana for coming and speaking. Again, start of the school year, to me, that's always my favorite time of being on the school board because you just, you, you have, as, as hard and as oppressed you may have been at the end of the school year previously, you're somewhat rejuvenated or really rejuvenated to find out what's gonna happen in the next year. So, like Matt said, rest up, we've got a few more days left. Same goes for the staff. There is the P D day Friday, the development day.
Yeah, so our staff have professional development on Thursday and Friday this week, and Monday and Tuesday of next week. And then, because it's intense four days of learning, we give them Wednesday off and then they come back refreshed with the kids on Thursday. But on Friday, we will be bringing the entire district staff together for a welcome back message at Corey High School in the, the stadium at the beginning of the day.
At eight o'clock, everyone?
Yeah, eight o'clock. We're actually gonna, their day starts at 7:30, so our drivers will be actually taking buses to the buildings, picking them up, bringing them there. So, and then we'll have a morning of professional development for them after that. But it'll be a really nice way to bring everybody together in one unified fashion to welcome everyone back as one district.
Sure. Thank you for the building leadership for coming this evening and giving us your feedback. Like, as somebody mentioned, through the summer, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. Just because school's out doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of things moving. So, I greatly appreciate everybody prepping the buildings and the staff for this upcoming year. Wish everybody to have a safe and, and happy start of the new year, of their new school year. That brings us to dismissal for executive session.
Do we need a motion for?
The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action and to consider the employment of a public employee or official and consider the employment promotion, demotion, or dis, discipline of a public employee.
Summon.
Second.
There you go.
That passed at 4:00. We will be back after executive session, but there's no action items after that. So, you're welcome to stay here for no reason, or you can head up. Thank you. No kidding.